It's the city council meeting. April 7th, 2024, nine o'clock in the morning. We all rise for the invocation and we followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Stephen. I am senior pastor at Turning Point Church on the north side of Benita Springs by Forty-one and Old Forty-one. Thank you for the honor of praying to open up our meeting this morning. Would you bow with me in prayer? Lord, we come before you this morning grateful for another day that you've blessed us with, grateful for the many ways that you've been working our lives and the lives of those around us. I thank you for the men and women in this room. I thank you for the care that they have for the city. I thank you for each person's role and what they do to serve the people. And as we serve you, God asks that you would give an extra blessing, not just on this meeting this morning, but in each person's life as well. God, we love you and we thank you because your love is not just for us, but those around us, and we have the opportunity to serve those. And I pray that we would just honor and glorify you in every part of this meeting this morning. We ask for your blessing on it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. On three, we'll unison the Pledge of Allegiance. One, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clark Seffield, please, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Fullick.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Is any comment? Do we have a second?
A second. Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. I'm glad to hear that you're here and the people at home watching on YouTube or online. Thank you. We, the people, have a government of the people, for the people, and by the people. It's our responsibility as people of this country to be the government. We are the government, and we need to participate. Let the elected officials up here know what you may need that we don't know about. The self-government started beginning with the pilgrims when they came over across the Atlantic. They wrote what was called the Mayflower Compact, which was people run the government rather than the hierarchy, the king, the dictator and stuff. So this is quite an honor and responsibility for the people to run the government. And I appreciate you all coming. Proclamations and presentations. Have Arbor Day. David Dor Smith for the Tree Advisory Board has a presentation. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to read this proclamation to you all. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is celebrated throughout the nation and the world as a special event to promote the planting of trees, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, watershed protection, and whereas the city of Benita Springs appreciates and values trees as they are a renewable resource, beautify neighborhoods, increase property value, attract businesses and customers, making our community more attractive, functional, and livable, and whereas the city of Benita Springs strongly encourages individuals, organizations, to value trees and plant appropriate species in appropriate places and keep them properly maintained so that we may have large, beautiful shade trees in all parts of our community, and whereas Arbor Day 2024 is all about ensuring our earth and the trees upon it are all healthy and growing to be as strong as they possibly can be. Now, therefore, Rick Steinmeier, Mayor of the City of Benita Springs, does hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the City of Benita Springs, and encourages all residents of Benita Springs to plant and care for trees to ensure this precious natural resource for all generations to enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we have. Thank you. I happen to be on the liaison with the Tree Advisory Board. I love trees, so that's great. Now, Jesse, would you like to make your, come forward and entertain the troops, so to speak? Proclamation for the sheriff.
There you go, sir.
Absolutely. This is an honor to present, but before we present, I know there's somebody on staff very important who also would like to offer a couple of words before we even kick off. So Arlene. Arlene, our city manager, is, as you know, very tied into LCSO as well on a number of levels, so I know.
Go closer to the mic.
I know this was an important one for her, so I wanted to give her an opportunity.
So, thank you. This morning, we're getting the opportunity to recognize former sergeant, now lieutenant, Bryce Harden. So he should be proud of me on this. One of the fourteen leadership traits of a Marine, J.J. did tie buckle. I did look it up. Shows you that a Marine should show justice, judgment, bearing, unselfishness, courage, knowledge, loyalty, and endurance. One very important initiative is that they should take action in the absence of order. So I can tell you, serving right next to Lieutenant Harden through Hurricane Ian, there is no sense of disorder at any point in time. He shows strength. There isn't anyone by a battle you wouldn't want by his side punching his way through. He also serves as part of the Sheriff's Department's SWAT team. And so, but one thing I did want to share is his compassion for the people he serves. So there is a softer side to the Marine, who I'm sure his coworkers don't always get a knowledge of, but his compassion for the folks that he serves is what makes the strong abrasiveness at times. Compassion for the folks that we serve. So with that, I'll let Councilmember Purdon read the proclamation.
Absolutely. He's one of the best we've had in Benita Springs, and it's gonna be, you know, it is, it's a sad day to see him go, but we know he's still with the LCSO family, so we're very proud of you and we're honored. And on behalf of the city, I'd like to say, in recognition of your promotion to lieutenant of Lee County Sheriff's Office in over twenty years of public service, including time served in the United States Marine Corps, North Carolina Police Department, Lee County Sheriff's Office since 2013, with over six years in Benita Springs Community Policing Unit, the City of Benita Springs hereby recognizes your outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to the safety and the citizens of Benita Springs. These last six years, you know what's happened here. We've blossomed, and we're growing, and that's all because of LCSO. Our downtown that's about to be the crown jewel of southwest Florida, that doesn't happen without you all. Ten years ago, you all know what it looked like down there, and now you've been to the meetings and you see what it's gonna look like. So with that, I'd like to call you up to present you with this award, and also I have a congressional coin from Congressman Byron Donalds I'd like to share with you as well. It sounds like they're calling for a speech.
None of this could be possible without everybody back there in green, honestly. I'm just a face. I do a lot of selecting and directing and pointing. They're the ones that actually carry the mission out, and you know, the Community Policing Unit, along with the city, are partners with Neighborhood Services, the Fire Department, all of it comes together as basically one team, one fight, and you need teamwork to make the dream work. So, but thank you. It's been a pleasure serving you. I'll take this one. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be on with.
Stay back here.
Oh, and look, we're all talking. But if you wanna go down for a picture, you can. Nigel, if you wanna go down.
Huh? Public comment, yeah, okay.
Okay. For public comment, we missed public comment. We can have it now. Do we have any public comments on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, is that?
This takes us to eight A. I'm sorry, eight B. Presentation on code enforcement activity.
Eight A, we need to make a correction on the minutes there.
No, 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 we're on eight B.
Eight, eight B.
Eight B. Next, first page. Eight B.
Eight B.
Mayor and council, at this time, I would ask the Director of Neighborhood Services, Tony Backhurst, he's going to give you our regular activity update on code enforcement activities. Then we will be followed by the Lee County Sheriff's update as well on their enforcement activities.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Tony Backhurst, Director of Neighborhood Services. Every year, I give a statistic update on what was the prior calendar year, and I'm gonna do that today and cover off. With Neighborhood Services, a lot of us will say code enforcement, and that certainly is one of the things we do, code enforcement. We also do emergency management. We have permitting for residential rental property program. And we handle some licensing and as well as the administrative component for when properties change hands within the city. There's searches and for liens, and at that point, then if there's a lien, we'll do that, and we work with title companies. So there's five main areas of what we work. Today, I'm just gonna concentrate on the code enforcement component of it. We have the city split into four sections, and our staff is on the left. We've got a director, a supervisor, which actually is now a project manager. We've got two administrative staff. We've got one senior inspector who's a field supervisor, one person in charge of the rental program, and then four code inspectors. And if you look at the map on the presentation, you can see that Zone One is Kyle Eastally, which is kind of the north central. Two is Angel Cruz in northeast. Then we've got Tyler Douglas, who handles the western component in three, and then four is Santiago Ortiz, who handles the south and southeast area. So code enforcement primarily is property management, probably maintenance issues. However, we also do, there's unpermitted work that we'll look into and unlicensed contractors. I'm not gonna read the whole list, but it kind of, it's the gamut of what things shouldn't be happening on private property and within the city, and we handle that through code cases, and we operate under the auspice of not just code ordinance, our code of ordinances, but also State Statute 162, which is the authority which gives us the ability to enact our ordinances. So in terms of our, this is overall responsive activities for code as well as rentals, this is included in it, and I've done it with a five-year chart to just show where we've been and been moving along. So if we go back to 2019, which is when we started collecting statistics that we could compare in order to see trends, areas where we'd need increased enforcement, so that was the purpose behind the stats, and now it gives us a five-year way of looking back at things. So you could see there, 2019, 20, and 21, there is an increase, it is on the upswing, and it's starting at thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine overall activities back then. And then you flip, obviously, 22 is an anomaly year, it's Hurricane Ian. We were up in excess of twenty-eight thousand, and then you come to the last year, 2023, and you can see it's considerably higher. The trend that was going prior to Hurricane Ian was an upward trend, and now you can see it's gone markedly higher. And the statistical breakdown, and this is essentially for the four inspectors that are out there, this is their monthly statistics between the four of them. So you can see there's a fair workload. July historically has been our busiest month. People would think it's in season, would be, however, you can see season remarkably is a little bit lower, so November, December, and January are actually our lower months, but still very, very busy. So it's a spread workload throughout the whole year for the department. So when we talk about code cases, there's sometimes some level of frustration, why aren't things going quicker? Why aren't we just out there, for want of a better term, the one we hear often is issue a citation. The process and the intent of 162 is, once we notify a violation to the property owner, we have to give reasonable time to comply. So a lot of the cases that we deal with are informal. We determine informal and formal. If we can get compliance informally, which is going up and talking to somebody, that's the preferable way of dealing with it. However, when we don't get compliance in what we would deem a reasonable time, we will go through the formal hearing process, and the definition of reasonable is, that varies. Each case is individual, giving people unreasonable timeframes, it's not gonna achieve anything, especially not compliance. We also understand, following a hurricane, we're gonna show people a certain level of compassion and empathy because their lives have been torn upside down, and we will give them time to comply. However, if no progress does occur, then we will go through the formal violation procedure, and the given date isn't achieved at that point, then there's a notice of hearing. The notice of hearing means it will potentially be heard by the hearing examiner, which is a magistrate quasi-judicial process whereby we have some ability to take action, and if the hearing examiner confirms of the violation, there's a finding of a fact that exists, they're then advised again to comply by a certain date. If that date passes and nothing occurs, then we will have an imposition hearing, and then the fines will, at that point, start accruing. The imposition of fines then can become a lien on the property. This is a fairly lengthy process designed towards compliance. So that's why we do, the system we do, and I've got some slides further on that do deal with compliance. Now, there is a caveat to that, a repeat violator, that somebody that has already been found in violation and by a hearing examiner, that's a repeat violator, and we have the ability to act in a quicker manner with that. And then due process, which is a term that we use often and is used all the time, we have to comply with State Statute with regards to the noticing period of time. We're still looking for voluntary compliance, but if we're going through this formal route, at that point, then we'll go out, we'll advise of the violation, give time to comply, they don't comply, then we will notice it for hearing. We have to comply with State Statute noticing regulations on that, so that's where the timeframe occurs. The thirty days is, that's written in there, we also have to allow, that's for certified mail. Many people who are property owners within the city do not reside here, so we deal with certified mail out-of-state residents, so there's usually a delay with regards to dealing with that. Just so you understand what the, when people call in a complaint, this is our standard operating procedure, our SOP for a code violation, and as you can see, it's fairly convoluted. So, you know, somebody can call in overgrown grass on property. The officers, inspectors, still go out and have to follow through this. This means then we can have due process satisfied, and us prior to going to hearing, there'll be a review on that, and our city attorney will go through, because if there's no due process on a case, it's not going anywhere. So we have to follow all the rules and regulations. So something is, you know, somebody's fence has fallen down, this is potentially what you'll go through. Now, some of them, the best-case scenario is two inspections, where you go out, speak to the person, you go back, they've complied, that's great. That's informal, that wouldn't even necessarily make the stats that I'm gonna go through now. So formal cases, ones that have actually gone into the system where we're now going and following through due process, I've done blue for 2023, and 2022 is in green, so again, you can see there is an increase. So when you look at the code cases, and then you look at total inspections next to it, it's, why is there such a disparity between the code cases and inspections? That's because some of these cases, ten, twelve, fifteen, in some cases, the ones that have gone to hearing, and there's been an imposition of fines, and there's liens running, we still are obligated to do monthly inspections on those as well. So we've inherited all the ones from the past as well, so it's an ongoing process. And I show this not just to show the numbers, but to show how compliance does work, because if you look, the second is total inspections, the third set of data there, excuse me, is the initial inspection, the first inspection that you go out and do. Out of that, you'll go into the re-inspection, and you can see how that number then, it is roughly four to five times the initial inspection. We do give time for people, and that will naturally increase, but then following the re-inspections, which is that process of getting people to comply, you can then follow it through to the next one, which is a compliance inspection, which would be the one prior to a hearing. And you can see the dramatic drop-off from that fourth block to the fifth block. And then when you're gonna do the hex inspection, which is the one following imposition, you can see, again, that drops off. Now, in terms of failure to comply out of all of those cases, in 2023, it was nine, which, when you're looking at the, I think it's twelve hundred and seventy-something cases, that's a very, very good level of compliance and working with the city, residents within the city. So I, compliance statistics, if you look at the total inspections, out of all those inspections, we had involuntary compliance, which means we've taken those cases to hearing. That would be sixty-six out of the twelve hundred and seventy-one cases, and just nine did not comply. So it's a ninety-nine percent compliance rate, which is very, very high. And here's the five-year trend, now we've got the statistics from 2019. So if you look, this is the percentage increase overall from 2019 to now. So I've broken it up into five separate compartments, and you've got, the overall activities have gone up sixty-four percent, then you've got next to that, inspections are up twenty-seven percent, you've got a thirty percent increase in violations, and then rentals have gone up thirty-four percent in the five-year period, and department revenue has gone up sixty-four percent. Department revenue would be from the rental program, people paying for the applications, permits, as well as mitigations on properties. So that is the way the trend has gone. So everything has gone up, minimum twenty-seven percent, up to sixty-four percent in those five key categories. If we just saw a spike in one, you could say it was an anomaly, but when you're looking at it across the breadth of that, there's a consistent upward trend of minimum of twenty-seven percent. The other thing that we do is private stormwater conveyance, and a lot of the stormwater conveyance systems are on private property that tie in with city property. So we activated, following Irma, a program whereby we maintain contact with people to keep their properties maintained as it assists in the overall drainage of stormwater within the city. So we opened forty-one stormwater code cases in 2023, usually it'd be higher, but we were dealing with Hurricane Ian recovery, which we still are now. We've got ninety-eight percent voluntary compliance, and I just wanted to put up some pictures here of before and after pictures to show, and this is voluntarily residents complying and working with us to ensure that our system works as efficiently as it can. So I'm just gonna flick through some pictures, and you can see the overall difference. That one there, you've got a mattress and a whole bunch of Brazilian pepper up by the culvert under the road, and then going along here, just seeing the difference. That one's on Benita Beach Road, which is a pretty dramatic change, and that would be it.
Very good, Tony. Thank you.
And any questions?
Yes.
Tony, question for you. The hearing examiner, who provides the magistrate and what are their qualifications?
Eric, would you wanna?
Oh, okay.
Morning, Mr. Rooney.
We have the, we, our current magistrate is Terry Kramer. He's a local government attorney here in Fort Myers. He's previously served as the city attorney for the city of Fort Myers, and when he was an assistant city attorney, prosecuted most of their code enforcement areas, their big cleanups in the Veronica Shoemaker corridor and other areas. So we looked for someone who was qualified in understanding local government, land development regulations, but also had a history with code enforcement, so understood sort of both sides of the balance in reviewing things, and that's who we have. We have a couple of other backups if there's ever a conflict as well.
So a neutral, qualified person?
Right.
Thank you.
Tony, what's the hex inspection?
That's hearing examiner inspection. That's, that would occur following the finding of fact, and prior to then the imposition of fines, we would go out and do a, we call it a hex inspection, and that way, then we can go back to the hearing examiner and say that the violation still exists.
Or it doesn't.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I remember back in ninety-five, before we were a city, we had a flood on the east side of Old Forty-one, and for like two months, the water was laying there. And finally, Lee County was responsible in those days, finally cleaned out underneath Terry Street that was blocking it, and none of the water could get out. In two days, it was dry. So keeping the areas that drain this area clean, like you've shown here, is very important to the safety of everybody, and I appreciate your work. I listened to the Lee County Commission meeting yesterday, and they said that a hundred thousand homes were damaged by the storm, and now we're gonna inspect and permit a hundred thousand homes all of a sudden. So it's a, it's a big project, for sure, and we've done, we're doing the best we can, I guess. So thank you so much, Tony. Anything else? Yes, there.
How's the written warning going out to the property owners?
I'm sorry?
How is the written warning going out to the property owners?
Written warnings invariably handed to, to the actual property owner. That would be done via personal interaction.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Tony. Now, we got the sheriff again?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, Lee County Sheriff's Department will give you update on the annual Community Policing Unit activities.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor, city council, city staff, members of the community, on behalf of Sheriff Marcino and the men of the womb and of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, I wish you good morning. Before we get started, I would just like to take a moment. I, I listened to the Lee County Commission meeting yesterday, and they said that a hundred thousand homes were damaged by the storm. And now we're going to inspect and per, and permit a hundred thousand homes all of a sudden. So it's a, it's a big project, for sure. And we've done, we're doing the best we can, I guess. So thank you so much, Tony. Anything else? Yes, there.
How's the written warning going out to the property owners?
I'm sorry?
How is the written warning going out to the property owners?
Written warnings invariably handed to, to the actual property owner. That would be done via personal interaction.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Tony. Now, we got the sheriff again?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. This time, Lee County Sheriff's Department will giving you update on the annual community policing unit activities.
Good morning. Mayor, City Council, city staff, members of the community, on behalf of Sheriff Marcino and the men and women of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, I wish you good morning. Before we get started, I would just like to take a moment of, to, of course, thank you all for all that you do, and I appreciate the relationship that we've had over all these many years. In doing so, of course, you know, we need a team of, of individuals to be out there to be working the road. And as time goes by, you've seen some people, some of the faces that have been permanent fixtures, and then, of course, we've had people come and go, and just an example of Lieutenant Harden here a few minutes ago. Of course, the good sheriff was able to, you know, promoted him, and he's moved on to other responsibilities. So as a result of that, of course, that creates a vacuum, and then we look at pretty much all the men and women that we have at the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and we try to find that individual that's going to be the very best fit for our community policing model and philosophy. So with that, I just want to take a quick moment to go ahead and introduce to you all the, the current team that we have. So we have Lieutenant Rush Bruton. He is, not only is he our lieutenant over the community policing program, but he is what I tend to look for. He was a community policing deputy in the city of Benita Springs many, many years ago. He eventually then continued his career, went to other places, came back as a sergeant with the community policing team, and now he is our lieutenant. So this is going to be the, or he is our current lieutenant over our program. As a result of the changes that we've had, of course, we have two sergeants. This is Sergeant Michael Zawerski, and most recently, our newest addition is Sergeant Sarah Lissick. So the two of them are going to be working for the good lieutenant and leading our team. But I just wanted to take a moment, so when you saw these faces here, you know, in City Hall, that you knew who they were, but they're the ones that are out there working hard and leading our troops. So thank you for that moment. Over the next few minutes, I will share with you the accomplishments of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and the men and the women of the Benita Springs Community Policing Team, their efforts as well. In regards to staffing, our staffing is complete, and our last member's currently in training and final, finalizing that. That should be wrapped up by the middle of May. In regards to our patrol activity, these are, we're talking about the boots on the ground, our first responders. Zones five and six of the fourth precinct, which is formerly known as South District, they contain, within the fifth and sixth zones, we have what is all of the boundaries of the city of Benita Springs. So talking about some numbers quickly, in 2023, we generated, and this is impressive, we generated and responded to over fifty-six thousand three hundred calls for service, which you're looking at about four thousand seven hundred calls a month. These calls include, but are not limited to domestic violence calls, vehicle crashes, any kind of a violent crime, thefts, suspicious person calls, et cetera. And that's a significant amount of calls that we're running on a daily basis. With our ever-growing population in southwest Florida, the demand for law enforcement continues to grow, and for, I think, for all of our services, and we adapt and deliver the highest level of professional service. Our traffic enforcement efforts, which address road safety and quality of life concerns, are impressive. We conducted over four hundred and seventy-five targeted traffic operations within the city of Benita Springs. Our traffic enforcement efforts resulted in over thirteen thousand one hundred traffic citations and warnings being issued. Eight hundred and fifty criminal traffic citations. These are people that would be driving without a driver's license, on a suspended driver's license, et cetera. There were totaled to sixty-three arrests, with five hundred and thirteen notices to appear, and nearly eight hundred parking citations. This is for parking in handicap spots, no parking zones and other restricted areas, which in doing so, of course, creates a risk to both pedestrians and motorists. Additionally, we placed emphasis on the safety and education of our pedestrians. We conducted fifty-eight crosswalk operations and met and educated hundreds of residents on the proper and safe manner in which to cross our roadways. We're meeting with children, we have up at Old Forty-One at the roundabout, there's a significant number of children that cross to go to Benita Middle each and every day. We have students, and actually several of you were there with me when we had the, the event, which was the Walk to School to Benita Springs Elementary. There's a lot that we do to target our children, but also our adults, that, you know, their primary method of travel is going to be by foot, and ensuring their safety by educating them how to properly cross the roads and what to look for. Lastly, since the inception of the No-Through Truck Ordinance along Old Forty-One, we, which became enforceable at the end of last year, we've conducted ninety-two traffic enforcement operations. We have also cited numerous violators and continue to notice greater compliance. And of course, these efforts will continue. Our CP Criminal Investigation Detective worked a total of a hundred and ninety-one felony investigations this last year. Several notable arrests were made, positively impacting the community of Benita Springs by removing criminals from our society. Numerous notable cases and dozens of arrests occurred. On occasion, some of our general crime investigations will dovetail into illegal drug investigations, and as a result, our CP narcotics detectives become involved and further these cases. Last year alone, our CP narcotics detectives generated forty-five long-term investigations. Please understand that our narcotics investigations, they are not short-term. There's an entire network that you're going to be looking at, you're going to be investigating. It's, it's pretty much peeling back, you know, the layers of an onion. And this is what, you know, leads to our success. So we conducted forty-five long-term investigations, seven of those are culminated in search warrants. We seized approximately six thousand eight hundred grams of illegal drugs, including, including fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamine, marijuana, et cetera, with a street value of over a hundred and six thousand dollars and over thirty-three thousand dollars of drug-related monies being seized. Our community policing efforts, our men and women that we have here, part of our team, they continue to interact directly with the residents of our community of all ages and all demographics. By sharing with our community, we have a better understanding of what is needed and what we can do for them and address quality of life issues. And there are hundreds of success stories. We've instituted a community policing program, which some of, some members may have already seen, but we've already have, we have members of our team that are conducting bike patrols in our neighborhoods and our city parks. That has been met with great praise by our community, and we've already noticed a significant amount of success in this program, and we're going to continue that. We continue to work with our local charities, such as Cafe of Life, the Benita Springs Assistance Office, and many others, who do so much for the community, and that interaction, having our deputies there, involved with these families, involved with the children, again, just ties into our community policing model. A lot of information comes to us as a result of our contact with our residents. For the holidays, we once again coordinated a Shop with a Cop event, and at this point, for any of you that were involved, I don't know who had more fun, if it was the deputies or the children, but it was actually a great, great time. We, we were very happy with that. So it was actually one of our largest shop, with the Shop with the Sheriff events that we had coordinated. We selected fifty-seven children who would have otherwise not had a wonderful Christmas, and helped them, you know, celebrate the, the holiday. We had identified several families, as I said, fifty-seven children were involved, and they had an incredibly great Christmas. We also included their siblings, so this was not focused on just one member of the household, actually, we were able to target the entire household, and also were able to help some of the families, as well as including the parents. So it was, it was a great success, and again, it was, it was just pretty much an unforgettable Christmas for a lot of these children, something we're very proud of. In regards to our partners, we have a phenomenal relationship with the Benita Springs Fire and Rescue District. There's a lot that we do together. They have been, you know, great partners in so many different aspects. One of the aspects that, that we have, and that we've actually grown on and with, which has been phenomenal, if we have a missing person, it could be a, an endangered child, it could be an endangered adult, they will actually work with us and come out and search the areas. Of course, the Sheriff's Office utilizes all of our assets, which, you know, we're talking helicopters, drones, dogs, our personnel. A, a, a lot of resources are, are invested in these, but they will actually come out and work with us, and then, of course, with several of the major special events, again, we're there as, as a unified team, working together, and very, very appreciative to them. Also appreciative is, of course, our city partners. Neighborhood Services, we work with them pretty much almost on a daily basis to go ahead and help them further their mission, and they assist us with ours as well. And it's, it's a very successful, successful relationship that we have, where ultimately the residents are, are those that benefit. Parks and Rec, same thing, we work together and support each other in creating a better and safer environment in all of our community parks and leisure facilities. We have some really nice parks here in Benita Springs, and I can tell you that those parks are utilized tremendously. We have deputies that pretty much on a daily basis are going through our different parks, interacting with our community, but at the same time, doing what we intend to accomplish, which is keeping our community and our parks safe. We had one instance not too long ago, our deputies are out there, they're doing the right thing, they come across some juveniles that were there at the park, and they were actually armed with firearms. We were able to make a very good arrest. Not only did we end up, you know, arresting these individuals, removing these firearms off of the street, and as a result, made the community safer. We had another case where we had another crime that was involved. Again, it was impacting our parks, we were able to investigate it, ended up getting Homeland Security involved, and ended up correcting that problem, you know, permanently. So there, there's a lot of success stories that we have, pretty much, you know, on a, on a consistent basis, to where we have been able to, to do so, and that, of course, again, we live in a beautiful, very safe area. City Hall, we continue to work on a daily basis with City, City Manager Hunter and her team to effectively address community concerns in a timely manner, and it truly is a pleasure to work with her and her team. I mean, she's, she's phenomenal, and those people that she's put in place are, are great. So we, we appreciate that. In regards to our special events, we continue to work and support the city's efforts with all of the very successful events, because that's exactly what they are throughout the year. We have Celebrate Benita, that's going to be coming up here real soon. We have Memorial Day, of course, Star Spangled Benita on the Fourth of July, which has grown immensely, and for those of you that were there last year, we've never had more people attend. And again, I am very proud to say that with the coordinated efforts of everyone involved, and the literally thousands upon thousands of people that we had there, we did not have a single event. Everyone that was there was safe, and I think we ended up with maybe one lost child, but we found the parents very quickly and the, and the multitude of people. And that was pretty much about as exciting as it got. And that's to the credit of everyone, those of your city staff, and fire, law enforcement, everybody involved. So that was tremendous. And of course, we have, you know, Veterans Day after that, or actually Halloween, that actually was very popular, a lot of my deputies enjoyed that, they volunteered to be here next year for Halloween. So they, that, that, that was very good. Of course, we have Veterans Day, and then, of course, Christmas in the Park, which is always, you know, attended, and it's, it's just another wonderful time. But several of these events have become hugely, hugely successful and continue to grow in attendance dramatically. The feedback that I've received from the community members, who have thoroughly enjoyed themselves at these functions, and the perceived safety while at these events, has been tremendous. So again, that's, that's to your credit for, for everything that we've done together. Our commitment to the future is that we will continue to work in partnership with our community and build upon the success of the past. Sheriff Marcino is dedicated to law and order in our community, as I'm sure you all know, and with the safety of our children in the form of the Safe Kids, Safe School, our drug enforcement initiatives specializing in, with the emphasis in opioid epidemics, our zero tolerance to animal cruelty, and so much more, is a very, very bright future for our community in our area. This has been nothing more than a cursory overview of what the Lee County Sheriff's Office has accomplished in Benita Springs. I could go on for hours. Okay? And again, the, our, our men and women have done a phenomenal job. So with the support of City Council, the amazing support of our community, because without them, we can't accomplish what we're doing. The partnerships we share, and the hard work of the men and women of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, under the leadership of Sheriff Marcino, we're committed to ensuring that everyone will continue to live in a beautiful and safe city. Thank you for your time. God bless.
I'd just like to say.
Yes, ma'am.
And you all make it so wonderful, because you're friendly with the kids, you move with the music, and they know, like, it's cool. You can come up to me, you can talk, you're open, and, and yeah, you're tuned to deviant over here.
That is correct. Thank you.
But most of our kids are so wonderful, it's fun that you guys really connect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, thank you. We're very proud of our Lee County deputies, and I think everybody knows that, but we appreciate so much what you do. Couple of questions for you. One, especially for our business owners on Old Forty-One, I was delighted to hear that you've got citations for truck violations. Can you give us a number, if not now, later on, how many of those we've done in, say, the last six months? I'd love to go back to those business owners and be able to have that response.
Sir, actually, we have conducted ninety-two operations since we were able to enforce it, which was later, towards the end of December. I think mid-December is when the, the ordinance came out, there was a process, which was a notification process that had to be put in place, and since then, we've conducted ninety-two traffic operations specifically for the commercial enforcement of the No-Through Traffic on Old Forty-One.
But the number of citations issued off those?
The number of citations that we've issued have been twenty-four.
Okay.
Yes, there's, there's a significant, there are a significant amount of vehicles that are traveling down Old Forty-One. However, as we had all discussed, you know, when the ordinance was being considered, if they do have business in that area, of course, they're not in violation of the ordinance. So we have followed a significant amount of vehicles, only to find them turning off, which if they do turn off, they're not in violation of the ordinance, and, and that's pretty much the activity that we have at this point.
And for people that don't think twenty-four is a lot, it actually is, because the word gets out that they're actually issuing citations. So thank you for that. Second question I have for you, Captain, is the thirteen thousand one hundred citations, eight hundred and fifty, which were criminal, so the twelve thousand one hundred and fifty citations, how many were actual traffic tickets, where either they're going for a fine or a court appearance?
I would say, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we're looking at about maybe thirty, thirty-five percent. Yes, sir. Well, again, we, we believe that it's very important to go ahead and educate people when it comes to traffic, traffic enforcement. The punitive measure, which is, of course, a, a fine that typically occurs, you know, with re-offenders or individuals that are, you know, committing some sort of an egregious traffic violation.
Other than the biggie is speeding, that's the one complaint that we consistently get. I know Chris, myself, and probably Jesse, our districts are affected the most.
Yes, sir. And, and we're out there doing our, our very best, and as you can see with those numbers, I mean, that, that is a significant amount of numbers, but we, we do believe in the educational process. And again, I think, you know, there's, there's no one here that hasn't been there that all of a sudden, you realize you're driving over the speed limit, but, you know, there was no intent, and if this is the very first time you're getting stopped, then, of course, you know, we, we don't feel that a maybe two hundred and fifty-nine dollar, you know, ticket may be appropriate. Sometimes it is. But that, that, just to explain sort of that percentage, that's the reason behind it.
Is that the average cost of a traffic speeding ticket now?
If you're doing fifty miles an hour over the speed limit, yes, sir.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, yes, sir.
Good to know. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Who's control?
Anyone else?
The speed limit, is it safe speed to go?
Sir, that, as, as I've shared with people.
I mean, come on.
As I've shared with people before, it's the speed limit, not the recommendation. Okay? And so, yes, but again.
About tailgating? I tell you, I have a little car, I get, they get like six inches behind me, I'm going to the limit, and they want me to go faster, and as the mayor, I don't want to get arrested.
No, sir, we don't.
That's for sure. But thank you, and so, such a pleasure to live in Benita, and feel safe, and be safe.
We appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like to pull O eight, O five nine, the last one, and then I'll talk to Nicole about hers, but just pull and approve.
What was that again? I didn't, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, so I would like to pull out the green sheet, which is the amended approved Celebration Benita twenty-four.
Okay.
It's green sheet, two four, oh four, oh five eight. So, and then, but move to, move forward and approve.
The rest of it. Okay, well, first, I'd like to make an amendment, I mean, a correction to nine A.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor and Council, it was brought to our attention, there is a typo in the minutes, and I think that with, on approval, this understanding, we're going to reflect the typo. Let.
Yes, it's, it's concerning the, the second for the approval of the consent agenda, and it should correctly read that the second was made by Councilmember Fullick.
Move to approve the rest of the agenda?
With, with that correction.
With.
We're going to pull.
So let's get, we're, we're.
So, let's get, we're, there's direction to go ahead and correct the minutes. There's only one item pulled. There's already motion, a second, to move the balance of the agenda. So, I think row call is what you're looking for on the approval of consent agenda.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes. Councilmember Bogaz.
And I believe Councilwoman Carr made a motion to approve item nine F, but she wanted to discuss it as well.
Yes. So, we've made an amendment, and the Rotary, the seven AM Rotary is going to do the beverage collection-
Correct.
For, well, I'd like that to be an alternating situation. It's not always the seven AM, that the twelve- Because Rotary is a wonderful institution, and we actually have three here in Benita. And that each one, each club gets to say yea or nay to if they want to do it or not. But that this doesn't become a standard for the seven AM, that the noon club, maybe next year, and then the five-thirty club.
I just want to-
I'd like to interrupt that. That's not, I don't think we're going to decide something today for next year.
It's decided every year.
My comment on it is that the Rotary Club now, they know how to drink. They know how to drink. Where the Assistance Office, a lot of the people that they have assisted are drunks. So, I'd rather have the Rotary Club that knows how to drink handle the alcohol at this party. But I would also like to know what the net dollars comes to them is, rather than everybody's collecting money here and there and everyone know, you know, how much is it, what is the real effect financially to the Rotary Club?
Okay, well, I take offense that Rotarians are drunks, but-
They know how to drink. I didn't say, you know, I said they know how to drink.
They may know how to, they dispense and they sell beer at these-
So, Mayor and Council, if I could just give some background-
I'm allowed to have my opinion. Thank you.
If I may give some background, historically, Celebrate Benita has, we, the council has permissioned authority to the Benita Springs Assistance Office.
Right.
There are other entities that have participated with Fourth of July in the past. As of now, the city only has the sale of alcoholic beverages at Celebrate Benita and the Fourth of July. And with the approval of the special event permit, as it comes before you, there's typically a letter from the organization asking, seeking that approval. To be clear, the city does not sell alcohol, period. That's not an option for the city. We don't have a nonprofit status to apply for that temporary permit. So, we do need to partner with a nonprofit in that process. In this instance, it was asked by the Assistance Office that this year only, is what I understand, that the Rotary assists them this year. So, when you review it next year, you're absolutely right, Councilwoman Carr, you would look at the application and the letter of request of who would be partnering.
Thank you, because there was nothing beforehand assigned.
Fred, you got the floor?
No, I, I-
I'm after the microphone.
I, I agree with what Laura said, that there's three Rotary Clubs. And for some reason, most of these things go to the first one that meets in the morning. I think some, there ought to be something where the others can participate too, if they want to.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Jesse.
I think maybe, I hear what you're saying, Fred. I think maybe we leave that to the Rotarians to decide. Also, in the spirit of following the Assistance Office request, that's the one they did so. For all we know, they've already had the discussion with that organization. So, I think if that was their request, and this is for a one-year situation, you know, Celebrate, this is very standard. So, anybody listening who thinks this is weird, this is, every big event that we have, we have a nonprofit partner who handles the alcohol. So, that's all this is. Rotarians are, have been around for a very long time. They do a lot of great work. Assistance Office was going to be in charge of it. They're asking for an assist from the Rotarians. Rotarians are offering to assist. I see no conflict here, and I think it's just a really good move. So, I think that we should move in favor of this.
Yes, because the Rotarians do keep the money that they earn local to charities. So, it's fed out locally to the local charities.
Mr. Mayor, isn't this simply, we're talking about the efficiency of dispensing alcohol. The Rotarians do it on a regular basis. And Benita Springs Assistance Office doesn't feel that they have the staff or people, that's all they're asking, let the people who do it regularly and have folks. That's all it is. It's just efficiency. It's not a matter of separating monies.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Under what I said, that we review it, but the-
But it's reviewed every year.
It's reviewed annually. My actual comment is, okay, I'm asking for a motion to approve, as is F.
Second.
Councilmember Carr. Mayor Steinmeier. Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes. Councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Purdon.
So, we did approve the rest of them?
Correct, correct.
Resolution authorizing-
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, I'm going to ask Ellie McEwen to come forward. As you know, we have participated in the first round of the CDBGDR funds that have been provided by Lee County, originally through the federal government to Lee County. We participated in the planning portion. We are recommended for funding for our two projects at five hundred thousand dollars apiece. At this time, we're going to need direction from Council on projects for the infrastructure portion. So, we've identified in no specific order, I'll let Ellie go through them, some suggestions for you, and I'll let Ellie talk about the timeline. And the reason why, just to make it clear, that you don't typically see resolutions, that you're seeing a resolution before you, is that is a requirement of the request from Lee County for the grant application process. It requires an adopted resolution.
Good morning. Ellie McEwen, Public Works Department. Arlene, I think, has said it all. But let me just take a few minutes. This is the second round of funding, if you will, for the CDBGDR money. And just as a quick reminder, this is a direct allocation to Lee County, countywide, which includes all the cities, of one point one billion dollars. And just as a side note, before I get started into the critical infrastructure and public facilities, notification, I was in a meeting yesterday with Lee County and the two planning grants that we were awarded. We should get those contracts next week. So, the county and HUD have collectively given all of the cities and the county direction to spend the money quickly. And so, that is our task. So, what we're here to talk about today is the public facilities projects, as well as critical infrastructure. We've identified four different projects, and those four projects were identified by you guys in late 2023. And so, when we were looking at projects to recommend funding for, we looked at our low and moderate income areas. I've included a map for your review, so you can see where those areas are located. So, the projects that you see in the green sheet are predominantly, not necessarily entirely, but there is a good portion, if not all, in those low and moderate income areas. And as you know, the CDBGDR funds are to specifically target the low and moderate income areas. So, the first project that we'll talk about is a stormwater and, let me back up, a corridor, street improvement project, which would take in Ragsdale, Pennsylvania Avenue, and the Arroyo Corridor. It's about a mile and a half. And what we would do is, there was major damage flooding from Ian. And again, you have to tie these projects back to the damage caused by the hurricane. And so, what we would like to do is stormwater improvements. That could be in the nature of larger swales. It could be underground piping to move the water away from the houses in the neighborhood. And then, once the stormwater improvements are done, we would come back and then install an eight-to-twelve-foot-wide multi-use path. And the multi-use path that would go along this corridor would be very similar to what you see today on West Terry Street. There is a large population that both walks and bicycles along the Pennsylvania Corridor. And so, it makes sense to provide a safe space for everybody to walk. The next project is Old 41, and that is from Terry Street North to Rosemary Drive. And that is very similar to the Pennsylvania project. It is realigning some of the lanes on Old 41, the demolition of the existing five-foot sidewalks, enlarging, making those sidewalks wider. As everybody knows, in the school year, before and after school, children who live in Rosemary Park typically will walk four and five abreast. And so, a five-foot sidewalk really is inadequate for that need. And there is, of course, a drainage component that we would look to install prior to the multi-use path, along with lighting, landscaping, irrigation, that sort of thing. The next project is the Sun Trail. And this project is partially within a low and moderate income area. And so, the cost that you see reflected here is simply the low and moderate income area portion of that project. And it is to acquire, just in the city limits, five point seven miles of Seminole Gulf Railroad, and the construction of the trail improvements.
I just want to correct that. It's two point three miles. The total length of the trail in the city of Benita Springs is five point seven. The two point three is representative of what is within the low to moderate income area. So, the thirteen million dollars is derived from two point three miles.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad you clarified that. Yes.
I did want to also mention that I understand that there will be a subsequent ask from the Village of Astero. Similar, they're going to be looking at the portion of the Sun Trail that's within the CDBGDR as well, and will most likely be reviewing that at their meeting today. What I did also want to make clear is clear expectations. As we've been in communication with Lee County, we understand acquisition is a permitted use. But we're not fully understanding that this project will meet the criteria. So, no harm in asking. That's why we wanted to make sure we prevent, you know, we provided you with the option. I don't think that precludes you from asking. I just want to make sure we're making clear expectations about whether or not it would potentially be funded based on the criteria we've already received.
And then, the final project, which would be eligible for is public facilities, and that is the expansion of the city's community pool. And that would, what we would do is expand the existing pool to an Olympic-sized pool with a children's activity pool, interactive water features, walk-in entries, family restrooms, changing rooms, bathrooms, and storage. So, those are the four projects that we've identified from your previously identified list.
One thing we also wanted to, we were, received some recommendation as well, that we should, you might know that there are some projects in your CIP currently that are closer in the horizon. For example, the soccer fields. What they were clear on is they wanted to make sure that we were looking at projects that weren't already funded within the city's parameters. So, we were looking at projects that were further out years that we could bring into fruition sooner, based on the, being able to provide the grant funds for those projects.
Now, Ellie, this is only a small portion, is one point one billion dollars? We're talking at sixty million?
No, this-
How does that equal out here?
Yeah, the two programs, there's two pots of money, if you will, right now. One is public facilities, the other is critical infrastructure. Both pots of money, the dollars available is about two hundred million of that. So, total, there's about four hundred million for these particular projects of the one point one billion dollars.
So, that leaves eight hundred million.
Yeah, but that's not count, that is not counting the residential portion that the county is working on now with individuals for rehabilitation, for elevation, for acquisition. And also, there's other notices of funding availability for single-family new construction for affordable housing, as well as multifamily new construction for affordable housing. So, the one point one billion has all been funneled into different pots of money, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
And just, Mayor, for clarification, there was one typo, a missed number in the green sheet.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, for the record, if you could just give the correct dollar amount.
So, the correct number is- Is one billion, one hundred and seven million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand. So, I put an extra eight in there. My fingers got a little excited when I was writing that number.
We will make sure that the record reflects the correct number.
Right. Do you need a motion to approve?
Well, what we do need at this time is a motion at a minimum for the resolution, because these are lengthy projects to put together. If you all are comfortable with the projects we identified and you want to so move, then we'd like that as well, that direction. It would be helpful. But if you do need one more meeting to add something else, that is a possibility, but that, these are lengthy projects, and I'm sure I'm seeing Ellie's eyes. So, I would think the sooner we had direction, the better.
Couple of-
Yes, the application deadline to submit all of the projects is May twenty-fourth. Each project application is about two hundred-plus pages. So, I don't mind working weekends, but-
Just from a clarification-
Specific direction.
From a clarification standpoint, there's no, are we ordering these? Are we rank ordering these in any way? No. Because my only concern is that, I, look, I'm a big advocate for rail system trails. They may see that as more pie in the sky and less actionable than some of these other ones we have in the pipe. So, I don't want-
So, my recommendation at this time would be not to rank them now, but we need to keep you fully informed as the process is moving. You also have a liaison to the board, and we would want to provide the liaison with correct direction on which projects you would like to advocate for as we move forward. So, I think there's time to rank these later on, as we find out how the funding's going to be distributed, if we know an idea of how many projects we might get, or what we should be narrowing down our numbers to, or if they say, if they're trying to equitably look at the funding. We want to come back to probably the first meeting in May and see if we need to rank those, so that you can provide direction to staff, as well as your liaison, to advocate for those projects.
At that point, can we add, my only issue is, I heard what you're saying about the soccer product, the soccer fields. I don't want to take that out of the pot. If they say you're going to get three projects, and, you know, two of them- and, you know, two of them are actionable, one is the Rails for Trails, if we have an ability to get the soccer. I don't want to throw anything out that has potential, so...
What I would suggest, if you want to add something now, that this is the time, and Ellie will put the background information...
I'm good with the three that you talked about, but I would like to have the soccer fields on there as well.
So if we approve these today, we can't add on to them tomorrow? Or in the future?
So we do, let me be clear and transparent. We have one more council meeting before the applications, possibly, I had to look at the dates, but possibly two. I would say it's very challenging for staff to submit, if we were even to go to the second meeting in May, to put the amount of documentation together that needs to be. So if there's a direction to add now, that would be very helpful, so that Ellie can get a start on the ones that you're comfortable with now. If perhaps there's something that comes up in the first meeting at May, we'll discuss that and make any accommodations we can to add that. So my recommend, if you wanting to add the soccer fields, now is the time to do that, so that the application can be prepared.
All right. With that said, I'd like to make a motion for all three that she went over to include the soccer fields, and then, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, all four, to include, and then to include the soccer fields. And then, as we get a better idea, if we have to take them off, fine. I would just rather have them in and the ability to take off.
Actually, I wouldn't even recommend taking any of them off. I would push them through the process. What we'll do is ask you to rank them, so if we had to advocate for certain ones over other ones, we'll have clear direction from council which ones you've prioritized.
And as these things go, I mean, there's, I mean, just similar to legislative process, there's a certain amount of dollars, and as they get down towards the bottom, you know, something that might not be top priority transportation-wise, but hey, they didn't get this, now they're going to get that as a result. If it's in the pot, it can be considered, so. All right, so the motion, do I have a second for them? Did somebody second the motion?
And I just like, lighting is in all these improvements.
Yes, ma'am. They would be complete projects. That's, that would be the goal. So providing all the infrastructure needed for the facility.
Perfect. Thank you.
Maybe this wouldn't be approved, but the sidewalk on Little Hickory Island has been destroyed. It was built by...
It's not low and moderate income.
It's also...
What's that? I'm talking. What do you want?
It's county.
It's the county road, but it's in the city.
Mr. Mayor, I think the problem is because of where it's at located, it won't fall into the census tract approved. So it has to fall in a certain census tract, and pretty much everything west of 41, for the most part, is out of that, unfortunately, so.
It's low and moderate income areas.
I think he gets it.
I think, I think what I'm hearing, sir, is that this wouldn't fit into this application, but if you'd like us to make some outreach with the county to talk a little bit further about those improvements, we could do that, too, in the meantime.
I call the question.
The vote?
Proceed to take the roll call vote. Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purden.
Aye.
Ellie, I have a question. There is an opportunity, is there not, within the CDBG grant for nonprofits to participate with the city in requesting monies? I know that this is something that's been brought up to the senior center, and I think one other, I think it was Cafe for Life by the American Red Cross. And when would that phase of this come in? Is that all out of a separate, another separate bucket?
No, that's part, well, it depends on what the ask is by the nonprofits. If it's infrastructure, if it's construction dollars, that kind of thing, this is the proper time to ask for that. In the NOFA, there is a section that would avail some of the money, or the ability to apply for some of the money by nonprofit special districts, and there was one other one. But in those cases, they would be considered a sub-grantee of the city of Benita Springs. So what would happen is, we would have to apply on their behalf for the funding. If granted the funds, then we would subcontract with them. They would have to adhere to all of the HUD regulations. They'd be subject to monitoring. They'd be subject to procurement in a certain way. And so we would become, in essence, take on the role that the county currently has.
Thank you.
Additionally, I just want to be clear, the liability then lays with the city. So if there's a clawback, the clawback is from the city.
February financial.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, our finance director will be coming forward to give you our presentation, our February financial report.
Good morning.
Morning.
My report today will be brief. I normally bring y'all some data from the state, which they release quarterly, so we're in a little bit of a lull on that, but we have plenty of exciting local financial news for you all. This is our general fund revenue as of February 29th. That's five months into our fiscal year. This is a pie chart. It gives us the composition for the major portions of our, again, our regular recurring operating revenue. Ad valorem taxes are also commonly known as real estate taxes. Those are collected at the beginning of the fiscal year. So at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is four months in, is still the beginning, excuse me, five months in. So it takes up a bigger piece. As we continue to move through the remainder of the fiscal year, all of our other revenues are collected monthly. So we will receive more of them in the later months of our fiscal year, not to become too complicated. But, you know, our revenue sharing, communication services taxes, again, those are monthly. So we'll see this pie change, and that's a regular, that's how it operates each fiscal year for us. This is our general fund revenue. We compare current fiscal year-to-date to the prior fiscal year-to-date for our major regular recurring revenue categories. And you can see, most of them are fairly consistent year-to-year. That is a great, great thing to have, financially speaking. And also, our real estate taxes, ad valorem taxes, as are labeled there, that's a technical term. We've noted this year that a lot of people have been paying their taxes earlier, which we think is a good sign for our local real estate market from a financial health standpoint. General fund expenditures. These are our regular recurring operating expenditures. We compare current fiscal year-to-date to prior fiscal year-to-date. This slide clearly indicates what we're hearing nationally, and particularly with our state of Florida, with respect to our inflationary trends. This is our operating expenditure slide, but we are also seeing those increases in our capital improvement projects. Again, we're not unique. We have, we budgeted, we planned for those, and we'll continue to prepare for those in our upcoming fiscal year budget, if those inflationary numbers don't ease off, or projected to ease off. Restricted revenues. These revenues are restricted as to use. That means that they're adopted specifically to fund, to fund specific projects. The first line item you see there are the building permit fees. That and the impact fees that are also listed there, those are based on new construction. Now, we know over the last couple fiscal years, our new construction, again, not unique to Benita, the state as a whole has seen this as well, has, the activity has fallen down somewhat. And what we're hearing from the state is, in the near term, we're not expecting that, and we also hear from our community development department, we're not expecting that trend to change in the near term. But what we have here on our slide is, for the first five months, we're actually ahead of last year, which is nice, given the fact that we know that that industry as a whole has had, seen some dampening in the activity that they're pulling for new construction. The other items listed here, unique, I wanted to point out, local option gas taxes. This year, we're a little behind last year. A common question we have is, gas prices are increasing. So one would suspect this would be the reverse. We'd have more revenue. But actually, it's been tracked and proven for our local gas tax, that when the prices go up, people reduce the amount of fuel that they use. They're conserving, they're watching their trips. They adjust their consumer behavior based upon the increase in price. So historically, we've seen very little change in the fuel tax with, regardless of how the price moves. Cash balances. We like to show you, it's a snapshot in time, as of the month we're reporting, and we show you the immediate two fiscal years before that. We think this is important, because it allows you to see the accumulation of funds that are going to provide for your capital improvement projects that you have. We love to pay-as-you-go fund for our capital projects if we can, so you see that funding, and when you see it accumulate, that means that we're preparing and planning for our capital improvement program. This next slide is a continuation of that. We do look at our cash balances as we're required to by our different fund types, the way they can be spent and the restrictions on them. What I did want to point out on this particular slide is the last data set there, funds reserved for debt. That has gone up, and the reason that it's up this year is because we received $2 million through the state, interest-free loan, to help us, if we need it, for operating, given you know, our reserves are out to FEMA right now, we're waiting on FEMA reimbursement. So this should help us shore up in the event that we have to spend some funds this year for operating. It's one year, it's sitting there in those funds, in a cash balance, earning interest, and we will pay it back in one year. But then we also have in there, the additional funds that are in there are actually the monies that we've set aside and accumulated with our partnership with Lee County for the downtown redevelopment debt. So, again, positive thing that we have that money sitting there to pay, to pay off the future debt. And that's it. If anyone has any questions?
Lisa, just one question. The franchise fees, that's up $447,000 year-over-year. Can you explain what, I mean, it's great, but why?
That's typically driven, the biggest component of that is electrical. So electrical franchise fees for the utility bills that people pay, and companies pay, everyone inside of our boundaries. So typically, that is an indicator that people have utilized that service a little more. So, and it could be growth, too. It could be growth, like new construction, if things come online, if something changes, you know, whereas they, the structure that was there before used significantly less electrical services than a new structure.
So we could anticipate that to continue to a certain level?
Well... Excuse me?
Similar to impact.
Yes.
It's more of an indication of growth.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we look, we watch those, we look to see what the rates or how the rates are going to change that are approved for the local utility that we have here, and we do track the trends. So we'll budget accordingly. We do try to budget conservatively. If we were to see the baseline year-over-year consistently be that rate, then we could be able to count on that. We do try to not be so, you know, aggressive in our revenue projections, because that means dollars we may not receive.
Lisa?
Yes, sir.
How much more ad valorem tax do you expect to get?
We collect all of our budgeted amount. So by state law, we have to budget 95, above 95 percent. So we budget right at 96, which is our historic collection rate. So we probably, we may get a little more. I don't know if the budget number's in here. It's in your packet, though, but I can point it out for you afterwards. But we do get 96 percent.
Does the ad valorem tax go to general fund?
Yes, sir. That is for our regular recurring operating revenue.
Okay. So there's maybe more coming in. What we budgeted, we budgeted, I don't know, 11 million or something?
Yes. We, that one consistently, we receive that, because even if someone doesn't pay, the tax collector sells...
In May, they, in May, we get paid...
Yeah, there's a, there's a sale that goes on.
A cell certificates and...
Yes, and we do, we do get our funds. That is a very reliable revenue source.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much for your question.
Arlene, you going to update us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, I would like to provide you with a little bit of an update regarding our work with FEMA. On April 8th, we did receive a letter with the findings that was based on the decision of the retrograde passed from the call we received at the end of March. We had the opportunity to meet, and I say staff, had the opportunity to meet with the administrator of FEMA, Administrator Criswell, and Region 4 Director, Robert Sazman, on April 8th as well. So the same day, we received the letter, we had an opportunity to meet. We were then offered an individual meeting with technical staff, to meet with our technical staff, to begin discussions on how we would review the information, and how it would be processed, and timelines. We then had the opportunity, again, on Thursday, to meet with all of the, one member of all the elected officials from the jurisdictions. Councilmember, Councilman Nigel Folic was there, representing the city, with our technical staffs and the Region 4 Director and his, and his main team. Since then, we then had an opportunity to, as each manager of each jurisdiction, to provide a letter to FEMA, which we forwarded to you as well, with our understanding of the process identified. We then got an email back from FEMA stating that that was their considered understanding as well. We forward those emails to you all. At this time, then, on Friday, our technical staff had an opportunity to provide sample sets of data regarding the findings report, and we were able to understand that those were complete submissions. There is no guarantee that that's, that will be forwarded to Atlanta, the sixth. At this point in time, there was another meeting yesterday with our technical staff and our consultant, and we forwarded 44 additional properties. There is another meeting scheduled for Thursday. Under the findings letter that we received, April 8th, there was 106 properties remaining that they wanted additional information on. Additionally, we agreed, the jurisdictions, to provide them with community outreach communications. We've provided since storm and continuing, a narrative of the community's compliance procedures of the special flood high hazard after Hurricane Ian, to identify stop unpermitted work, maintain permit records, make SISD determinations and calculations, and maintain SISD records. We will provide SOPs for post-disaster floodplain management, list of properties determined to be substantially damaged as of April 8th, 2024, list of permits issued in the special flood high hazard as of April 8th, 2024, copies of elevation certificates received as of April 8th, 2024, list of demolition permits issued in the special flood high hazard as of April 8th, 2024, and a list of code violations, stop work orders issued by the city as of April 8th, 2024. We appreciate the technical staff has been receptive and quick to provide information and response back and forth, so we're continuing to navigate that process. We also have had the support of our congressional delegation. I received contact from, direct contact from Senator Rubio's office, Representative Donald's office, and Senator Rick Scott has now established weekly calls with the jurisdictions. We had such yesterday. He then provided a letter to Director Criswell with some additional questions some of the jurisdictions had. At this time, Benita did not have any additional questions in the process. We are continuing to request, as a united front, some more time than the 30 days, but we stand committed to providing every bit of data that we can within the 30 days, should that additional time not be provided. If you've got specific questions, John Dolmert's here. Aida, rightfully so, is at her desk right now, preparing diligently for her meeting, again, to occur on Thursday.
Question?
Yes.
So, Arlene, there were 44 additional houses, and then there's 160. Is that less than 44, or...
In a findings letter we received, that they wanted additional information on 106 properties. We confirmed six complete packages on Friday. That does not guarantee from FEMA they're approved, it's six complete packages. It just won't be back and forth for more information. As of yesterday, we provided 44 packages. That's not been determined complete, but we did get an email confirmation that they are received within 40... Within 48 hours, we're supposed to be determined whether or not they're sufficient, not approved, sufficient. And then our goal is to provide, there would be remaining 50 properties that we're working on right now.
My comment is that if all this time and effort was put into actually doing something, we'd be a lot further along, but.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, by our staff or by somebody else?
Yeah.
Well, we're doing all this paperwork, all this bureaucracy, rather than shoveling sand or doing something constructive rather than making more politicians and more bureaucracy, more government employees. You got 300 people out there in Cape Coral looking around, checking to see if they get permits and all this, all this other stuff. I just, it's a shame that the system works the way it does or doesn't work, so.
If I may, under Councilmember reports, I'll give you my summation.
We're doing what we're supposed to do.
Yes, we are.
And the Governor, former Governor Scott is on our side. And, you know, there's swamp up in DC. You know, we got a swamp here in the Everglades, but there's a bigger swamp up in DC, so. Maybe I'm being a little sarcastic, but go ahead.
That concludes my report on FEMA.
All right.
I did, if you would, just indulge me one quick. April 24th is a Wednesday. Sometimes we have council meetings on Administrative Professionals Day. It's usually a Wednesday, but this year it's the 24th. If you would allow me, I just would like to recognize many, all of the administrative staff that actually makes your director's job easy. So we might be the ones talking and communicating with you. The actual Ts that are getting crossed and Is that are getting done and phone calls that we made are from the boots on our ground, which is our administrative staff. So in community development, we have Mimi, Rebecca, Barbara, Cynthia, Leah, Sarah, and Deshaun. At, for your City of Bonita Springs administrative staff throughout Parks and Rec, Code Enforcement and City Hall, you have Michelle, Cheryl, Letsy, Debbie, Maria, and of course, Jane. So we appreciate and applaud all the work they do all year long. And so thank you for giving me a chance to just publicly recognize them for a quick moment.
Thank you, yes. Who wants to give a report?
Good sir. At the monthly meeting last Tuesday at the Fire Department, Commissioner Stephen Salaka announced that he is retiring from his position as Fire Commissioner. And he is heading to New York to spend some more time with his family, his daughter and grandchildren. He's served on our Veterans Advisory Committee. He also served as City Council for two years and then as Fire Commissioner for six years. So we just want to wish him and his family the best and thank him for all the service he has done for our city. And I do have a card that I'd like to pass around if everyone would take a minute to sign that. And at the meeting also, Fire Chief DeWitt recognized five firefighters for their one-year service and getting out of their probationary period. And there was also a firefighter received a five-year pen. And then we had a battalion chief that received a pen for 25 years of service. So that was pretty exciting to see. And they have also on the property on Hickory Boulevard, they have received an offer of $5.5 million on that. And the attorneys are currently reviewing that offer and they're hoping to have that signed off and going into action soon. And they also are donating a engine to Ida Baker High School. They have a firefighter program there and there's only two programs at Lee County High Schools. And the program is at South Fort Myers and Ida Baker. And at that program, the students can attend and they leave there graduating with fire certificate one. And so they did not have any truck at that school to be able to train on. So the Fire Department is donating an engine to Ida Baker High School. Representative Adam Botana has also reached out to me regarding the city and Lover's Key working together to give the residents the opportunity to receive annual passes at Lover's Key State Park. I have understood that this has been addressed at times with council, previous council, and I appreciate the time that they've spent on this. I'm just now gathering information and I have requested a meeting with Representative Botana and city staff, and I will bring back further information at our next council meeting.
Well, thank you. Jesse, you want to follow up?
Well, number one, I'd like to say that I'm glad that that's come back up because that was something when I first started, I thought would come to life and then it fizzled off shortly thereafter. So I'm glad to see this have some new life and I'm hopeful that it gets somewhere. As far as the FEMA meeting, I had the opportunity to go to the FEMA meeting in my other capacity, but I wanted you all to know, which I'm sure Nigel will get into, how our staff was. I mean, we could not have been represented better, more professionally. They asked very pointed, necessary questions where, you know, you're going to get staff sometimes in the room who are with Federals and they don't know how to act and they don't know, they're afraid, they're afraid of the stage. They weren't afraid of the stage. I probably saw more of Aida in that meeting than I've ever seen her. And they really, they fought for Benita very, very well in that meeting. So I was just very proud of them and I wanted you guys to know, you know, from the perspective I was sitting in, we had probably the best representation at the table. So we should be really proud of them. Next, and really the only last thing I have is, since the last meeting, one thing has changed. Some of you have heard, I got married. So I went out to Las Vegas and spent two great days in Vegas, then went out to Joshua Tree, spent some time out there. I had a little private ceremony and flew back about nine days ago. So I've been back for about nine days and this is the first official news breaking in public. So glad you guys are here for it. Thanks.
Okay, you want any wedding presents?
Thank you.
She's so beautiful.
Thank you.
Very good. Fred, how about we go over to you for a while?
Yeah, last week, I had the privilege of attending kind of a ribbon cutting, quick opening of a facility that Sheriff had put together to basically bring in animals to a concentrated place and primarily for kids and all that to be able to go in and work with them. And it's real interesting, there was two council members from Estero there. Myself and Jesse were there. And then beside that, there was Ray Sandelli, and that was the elected officials. The smallest turnout of elected officials I'd seen on, something the sheriff does a long time. But it was very successful, the media covered it pretty heavily. And it had at least two busloads of kids there too that were going in with animals and all that.
Laura Carr, would you like to add something?
Well, I do want to wish all that are celebrating Passover on the 22nd to have a wonderful Passover, eight days in Key Stade. I'm not sure how it all works, but happy Passover and hopefully it's peaceful. There were some questions I would like clarified. When we have a zoning meeting and a person does public speaking, is there exchange from the zoning committee? I know it's quasi judicial, so it's a little bit looser. Derek, is there?
Tighter. So we had a zoning board meeting yesterday and we haven't had, we haven't had formal objections in quite some time to the zoning board. So it was a new issue for the zoning board. And there was a request for additional time. The additional time was granted to a representative party. There was a little bit of back and forth between the zoning board and the person cutting into the time. And so that became an whole issue. And so one of the things that I mentioned at the conclusion of that meeting.
Get closer to your microphone, please.
Yeah, it's not me making the noises though. But there, one of the things that I wanted to, you know, express the zoning board and also express to the council that when we're working on the revisions to the different land development code boards, one of the delays in putting that together is that I completely want to redo the entire process, not just the composition of the boards, but our procedures. You'll notice it when you have your next zoning board. We have multiple lists of criteria that could be simplified, put into plain English, something that would be easier for the zoning board to articulate and respond to. Also, formalized procedures for when we have neighbors who may be represented by engineers, planners, lawyers, that they actually have an obligation to provide that material in advance of the meeting. So the zoning board was each given a big binder full of information, objecting to the application that was heard yesterday. Obviously, none of the zoning board members had any opportunity to review that application. So I'm looking at some procedures to make sure that that information gets provided to city staff, to the board members yourselves and others in enough time for them to actually review the information rather than have essentially a trial by ambush at the hearing. So there are a number of things that occurred during the meeting that exemplify why we want to change some of these regulations. And so that.
But what about speaking when a public speaker comes to speak?
If.
Do you talk back?
I recommend against it, but that is for the zoning board or if it was happening in a city council meeting, for the council members themselves to raise an objection under parliamentary procedures or ask me to intervene.
Okay, so zoning is a little bit looser, but for our meetings, there's no dialoguing back?
That, you have adopted rules for that. There is no adopted rules for zoning board.
Are we going to be consistent?
I mean, that is something we can consider changing, changing those rules as well for purposes of whether or not it's ever.
Well, no, it's either consistent or arbitrary.
Well, no, because the issue is when it's, when it comes to quasi judicial hearings, there may be at times where it's appropriate to intervene, to cut off certain lines of inquiry because they're irrelevant to the decision-making. So if someone is talking about Arbor Day during, as an objector, during a discussion about rezoning, even though there may happen to be trees on it, that would be irrelevant testimony. And so it would be appropriate for that case, the zoning board member to cut it off.
But what about in our meetings?
You have adopted rules of procedure for that.
Okay, and can we enforce them and continue, be consistent?
You would raise a point of order if you felt that something was done inconsistent with the rules.
Okay, and can one leave a meeting without asking permission and just leave and exit the room?
It is, it is generally considered inappropriate to leave a meeting before a vote, especially if there is a discussion item or there is an evidentiary proceeding going on.
Oh, but you can leave, just like right now, I could go because there's no vote going on? I could leave and come back in?
Yeah.
Okay. And the 27th of April, Saturday, 6 to 9, there's going to be a party in the park for Celebrate Benita. And we have Tyler Farr and Low Cash playing. So you like country, but actually they're great and it'll be a fun evening. And there'll be beer by the rotary. And of course, lots of food trucks and ways to get in and out.
Nigel, please.
Thank you, sir. First of all, to all my fellow council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to represent you with the FEMA meetings and the call yesterday. Just a brief report, the meetings were civil and that was a good thing. I would tell you right now, if, and I've heard this from a couple of other people that were in attendance, the two entities that seemed to be the most prepared were absolutely our Benita Springs city staff and the county, Dave Harner and his staff. The questions were pointed and I would tell you that the physical reaction of the FEMA folks was, they were surprised. I think they were surprised at the pointedness and the efficiency of the answers that they were given, to the point that they wanted to come back. I think everybody has seen the articles in the newspaper and seen some of the snippets on television of interviews that were taken out of place, especially Congressman Donald's. I think it was inappropriate the way they framed his response. The bottom line is, the 30-day extension that we were given actually didn't occur until that meeting and that date is a floating date. So they're saying 30 days, but they said publicly at the meeting, or when I say publicly, to us at the meeting that if they needed or we needed more time, that they were open to that. The data that we gave them clearly pointed out that the fact that they were approaching us and saying that we didn't do what we were supposed to do was wrong. I'm standing on that right now. We have the data, our staff has done a phenomenal job of accumulating that data and getting it back to them. My concern as a council and as our city is that not all of the entities that were at that meeting, the municipalities and the county are in the same position we are. And there's been a couple of public statements from other municipalities about what's going on. My concern would be that we get lumped in with everybody and treated the same. I don't think that's going to be appropriate. I think that the city of Bonita Springs handled themselves in much better fashion post-storm. And if we need to, and I've talked to Derek about this, you know, there may need to be other avenues explored to protect the city and our insurance category. So I would encourage us to stay on top of that. I was really impressed yesterday when Senator Scott held that telephone call. I thought it was going to be the typical, he talks for two minutes and then turns it over to his staff. No, that was not the case. He actually spoke and then he turned it over to questions directly to him. So there was a sense of, we've got his support. I know we've got Congressman Donald's support and hopefully Marco Rubio. Other than that, my real sincere thanks to Arlene, Matt, Lisa, John, Aida especially, who brings both heart and data to the conversations. They did a phenomenal job. So they worked on behalf of both council and our city and I'm very confident where we're going to end up with this.
Thank you, Nigel.
Thank you.
Chris, you got anything to add today?
No, I think Nigel and Jesse covered it all. I mean, I was keeping up to date with the, what was going on with the discussions with FEMA. Thanks to a lot of phone calls Arlene made to keep me apprised. And, you know, I think, you know, it basically boils down to the, what I call the administrative state, wanting to make changes to the rules by which we have to operate without having those rules backed up by legislation. And we're complying with what the rules are that are backed up by legislation. And they would like to see different rules in place. And they're trying to, in my view, trying to force that position onto us. But we're supported by the legislation and by the rules that are actually published in the federal register and so forth. So, you know, we'll get through this. I think we're starting to turn the corner and I'm cautiously optimistic that we will retain the discount. So I'd like to report that. I continue to wait and hear what we're going to hear from Baron Cogger about downtown development. The due date for that is May 1st, which happens to be a council date. So I'm excited about seeing what they're going to bring forward. I do think at some point that, you know, there's a lot of not-for-profits organizations that have a lot of people that participate in those organizations would like to see us do something with the old library. I keep telling them that the cost of doing something to fix it up is probably more than it's worth. But that being the case, that perhaps there's some funds available through the CUDBG grant or through other federal programs to build. What we really need is what I think a community building for Benita Springs, one we used to have on the Banyan Tree Lot, but something maybe over around the Ruck Center that all the community could use. So I would like to see us think about that going forward.
So I think we had a vote in, that I had understood.
So, I think we had a, a vote in a cur, that I had understood that we were moving in direction of that would be code enforcement offices with LCSO.
Yes.
I believe we had a vote on that.
Oh, no, I'm not talk, I'm talking about building a-
Oh, another facility, understood, understood, yes.
Building a newer community center that-
Correct.
Can be specifically designed-
I was like, wait a minute, I was like, what are you doing right now?
Uh, no, I, 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 so-
I just thought, I didn't think we were going to do anything with the old library, because it's such a mess, so.
Well, that, so what will need to be determined is the infrastructure needs of those two very technical staffs. You've got a very technical staff, there's a lot of IT equipment needed for both of those entities, that we'll have to look at security, safety and security and separation. So, there's a lot, so we will have to balance that out in the renovation versus a rebuild. So, that, that will be decisions that would have to come before council and that. And yes, we have heard from the community and other coun, and other council that you'd like us to be thinking about in the horizon a future CIP as to what makes sense for a community center or location, similar to what we've talked about with what the community hall used to offer for meetings for Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or Garden Club, folks that have a place that have an opportunity to have a, a location to, to gather and financially easy pay to rent a room, to, to have meetings. Yes.
I'm done.
Okay, now, I question whether, we had this hurricane, this Ian hurricane. Now, we had to have an army of people go out and decide which houses are damaged or beyond repair. Were we advised as to what we have to do when there's a storm like that beforehand, or do we, we just hit the storm and then they say, oh, we gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta do this? How prepared were we for, to, to fill out all this paperwork that if we had another storm? Were we prepared?
So, Mayor and Council, in full transparency, I believe that our staff reviewed the existing codes and regulations that are in place and enforced, and applied those to the process in which we reported the substantial damage. From there, we did active code enforcement through putting, placing appropriate holes on properties, so that new active permits could not come in if a whole renovation was not looked at completely. All of this within the special flood high hazard. There was outreach continuously, immediately passed, immediately once it was cleared to be on the roads. And additionally, throughout this process, as of today, or yesterday, I believe staff was still getting phone calls from folks who were deciding what, what course of action they were going to take on their, on their property. Were they going to look at a demo rebuild, or were they going to look to come into compliance? Those calls are still happening today. We're only 18 months past storm. You, you have, you also have folks who have told us, indicated they're going to do a sell as is, which would not invoke any of these requirements. It would be, come upon the next property owner to address those issues, to determine what, what next steps they would take.
Okay, well, in that line, I had somebody approach me on Little Hickory Island, I was there shoveling sand off of the sidewalk, and he thinks the city should take these houses that are damaged, enforce the owner to demolize them, to destroy these houses. And I said, we're humans, and who are you to decide what people can do on their private property?
Mayor and Council, as many of my counterparts have said in their own council meetings, this is the United States of America, people have rights, they have due process.
Absolutely.
And we are not in the action of, of going on to people's personal properties, searching and seizing and removing their items. That is something that is through a decision-making process that they need to go through and work through our codes and regulations, and they then come to the decision on how they want to move forward with their own property.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor, to comment on that, I don't think it's our best interest currently to criticize or point the finger at FEMA until they actually come back to us with what we need to do. However, it was very clear several times by both Arlene, Aida, and Dave Harner and his team, that FEMA was actually making the process a very fluid one, where they were saying that we should do things that are currently not in the regulations, and so they keep using the term "universal." Well, until that's decided, we're going along with what their regulations were at the time of the event and post-event. Right now, saying that anything negative, I, I don't think it helps us, because we've got people at FEMA, and people have emotions. If we're pointing the finger, I think if we criticize or make comments, it's probably better post-decision.
Okay. The question is, have we gone through this before? No. We've never had to go through this before with any of the storms?
John, Domar can answer specifically, but you went through this with Hurricane Irma, and we did the same substantial damage, substantial improvement worksheets and forms. The, the damage was more localized into certain areas, so it was a little bit more ability to have boots on the ground quicker. You had such widespread throughout the city structures that we, we accomplished and addressed those, those items, but the timeframe was, was slightly different with Irma.
Is it basically community development's responsibility, or is it just everybody's?
So, post-storm, regardless of which sort it was, we, Irma was really our first experience with, with anything of any substance, followed up obviously with Ian. However, right after the storm, both our department as well as Neighborhood Services were out performing that initial damage assessment. We were complete within two, three weeks, from what I remember, and from there, those numbers have been what I've been reporting to you on, on about a monthly basis, in terms of balancing the number of structures we determined from that initial damage assessment versus how many restoration permits have come in. Now, an initial damage assessment is simply-
Who does that? Who, who did that? Where did the army of people come from?
The initial damage assessment, that was done by Community Development and Neighborhood Services. Both departments worked to perform that, that assessment. It is an exterior inspection, you do not go on the property, it is, it is done based on what you can see from the outside, and as property owners come in, then the property is, we have, what I think has made us a little bit different is, we have not issued individual permits for improvements or for recovery. What we have asked for, and what we have worked for, is providing a complete list of improvements that are going to be necessary to restore a property back to, to its original condition, and that restoration permit normally comes with, with a standard, or a substantial damage worksheet. What is the cost of all the improvements? How much is the property worth? If it, if it is not in compliance with current FEMA standards, if it is, if that value of improvement is less than 50%, they're allowed to go forward. If it is over 50%, they have to bring the property into compliance. What concerned us, and Aida really deserves the credit on this, because it was her thought, why would we issue permits to, to replace an HVAC system or certain components of a property, only to find halfway through the restoration process that they had used up to, and were going to exceed that 50% of their value, we couldn't complete the restoration? So, I think initially, this was probably met with a little resistance and a little, some upset property owners. I think as we have worked through the process, it has really served us well, because it allows us to state that everybody that has entered into a restoration process has been able to complete it. We don't have property owners that come in, have made partial restoration, and then realize that they're going to exceed that 50% value. So, that money that either they used for their insurance settlement, or their own money, was basically all for naught, and have to come back in and spend additional money to bring the property into compliance. So, there's been a lot of, of meetings, a lot of back and forth. Mr. Mayor, I understand your frustration, but Councilman Fullick, thank you very much for your recap. I found that to be very accurate, and I also agree with your statement. At this point, we seem to be on a positive path. What we are supplying, FEMA has left designees in the area, and we have been working with them on our submittals, as those have been our most recent meetings. They do not make final determinations, but they are experienced, this is their job. And so, they have given us positive feedback to this point. Arlene indicated, and she's accurate when she says, while we've given, been given positive impact, the final decision will be made further up the, the chain of command, as it should be, and when we receive that information, we'll let you know. However, at this point, what has been discussed, the, the back and forth and the discussions have all been positive, and at this point, while nobody likes to have to go through a process like this, it is one that, that I think we can at least see the finish line, and we are trying to work towards bringing this to a resolution. So, I don't know if that answers all of the questions. I know I still have some questions, but we're still working as hard as we can to get through this.
Well, I'm, I'm not criticizing the city of Benita Springs in the way we're, the way we're trying to do this. I think we're, we're bending over backwards, trying to do all this, this stuff that we necessarily didn't have or ever do before.
And I'm sorry if it came across that way, that wasn't my intent.
So, we'll get through this. So, thank you, thank you, John. Anybody else? I guess we can go adjourn?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. You guys sit here all day, listen to us. We are for the people, by the people. Here's the people.
Ben Hirschman, I'm going to speak on my behalf, on behalf, relative to yesterday's zoning board meeting, and I feel I have to. Yesterday was an unusual day, to say the least. The procedure, as a member of the zoning board, and I've been a member now for several years, and currently serve as vice chair, several days, or perhaps a week before any zoning board meeting, the members of the zoning board get a packet. Sometimes a packet is like this, most of the time, it's like that. In addition, it's available here at the, at the front desk, or it's available online. So, you have plenty of time to go over what the applicant has to say, then you see the full dossier of, of the applicant, and you also get a response by community development. And they work very hard, they will go through every single point, they come to their conclusion, and then, at sent out, zoning, zoning board members do their homework, we come to the meeting. I had several questions based upon the packet that I had read over the weekend, very valuable information. What happened yesterday, I had a few questions about the applicant, and there was a presentation by staff, there was a presentation by the applicant, back and forth questions. But what happened yesterday was, at the very last minute, we were all handed a very thick notebook. I didn't know what the notebook was, I didn't know who submitted it, was it a member of, was it on the applicant's behalf? Was it on the, perhaps an opponent? I did not know, and I didn't have time, and I wasn't going to go reading through it, simply because the meeting was active. I, unfortunately, what happened was, Derek, our city attorney, was the traffic in the morning, he had to allow plenty of time to go across town, I've learned that the hard way. And what happened was, this is this doc, this big notebook. At the end of the presentation by the applicant, as well as the city staff, this person got up on behalf of a, a, perhaps a client, an attorney, and to discuss something that was in opposition to the staff's report. We had no rules of procedure, this is the first time this ever happened. What do you do when you get a notebook that's this thick, prior to the discussion and the, and the decision-making process? I happened to see Derek out in the parking lot this morning very briefly, and I look at these things as a learning experience. Yes, we do need rules of procedure, because if you consider the same situation happening here at city council, what would the city council do? Maybe you have a rules of procedure, I don't know, for this such a, such a thing, where you have people presenting cases, and all of a sudden, you get a package this thick, and before the meeting. I don't know how the reaction would be. I think each one would probably have their own opinion as to, what are we getting this at the last minute? How are we supposed to incorporate this into our decision-making? There simply wasn't enough time. Now, it was an integral, integral part of this, and I apologize perhaps for overreacting as well. We were going by the seat of our pants, and I think our city attorney at the end of the meeting, it was good, that he's going to be developing rules of procedure or recommendations as you just stated. I'm, I'm full supporter of that. A similar thing happened to me many years ago, when I was up a small town that I have a place in, in, in Maine, and it was, a similar situation took place. The board of selectmen had a presentation that he had never seen before. I'd like to request-
Give him some more time.
I'll finish it in one minute, okay? Bottom line was, I, I, I volunteered to help present a, a write-up, a rules of procedure. So, I just want to say, yesterday was going by the seat of the pants, for my own behavior, if I overstepped it, I apologize. It's, it just simply was an overreaction for an experience we had never had before. So, I just want to let you know that it was a learning experience, and I know we'll be better for it when these rules of procedure are, are created. And there is an element of due process that has to be followed, you should listen to everybody, but how you can incorporate a lot of stuff when you're seeing it for the first time, I, I would say to anybody, it's a challenge that I, I did not like, and we can't meet, meet those kinds of requirements. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ben.
I'd like to just comment, oh, no, Roy, go, please.
Ron.
Oh, Ron.
Ron George from Little Hickory Island, and Mike, I forgot to fill out a form.
That's fine, thank you.
But if you need one, I will. I'm here as the president of my condo association, Seascape, and first of all, I really want to thank our community development department and John Domer's people. We've been back in now with legal, legal occupancy, one, you know, true legal, and for about a little over a month, and, you know, our experience with the city's been really good about getting us back in. I'm sure we've got a lot of activities in the future to go, and I think we're going to hit some bumpy roads with permitting on some of that stuff, so appreciate, you know, if you at least try to work with us. The, the other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was being out on Benita Beach. I guess right now, I've been back about a month, and I think, I think we need to see a little more love shown on the beach area. I, I noticed things are getting a little bit out, out of control, there's just a lot of dogs on the beach, litter on the beach, I don't see a lot of deputy presence on the beach, and last weekend, I noticed there was like three nights in a row that there was activities on the beach in the middle of the night, like I could see, you know, I think there's a lot of stuff maybe taking place at the point on the north end of Little Hickory Island. So, I guess I'd like to see a little more love in, in, you know, involvement on the beach, and I know the beach is sort of no man's land, right? It's partly county, city takes care of the, the policing through the sheriff's department, so it gets sort of in the middle of everything. And I, and I do, I do agree with the mayor about, it would be nice if the city could influence the county to, to give us some love too on the beach, because all of the accesses, it looks like they haven't really done much with the beach accesses. The, the path that Rick talks about, I normally am on the beach side, but every once in a while, I'll get on that path, and if the, if we can influence the county to do something about that path, because it is really unsafe of all the uneven pavement that exists on that path. And, you know, I, I know it's not a city path, but any influence would be appreciated. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else? Public comment? No? I guess we go home. Where's Jerry?